So I get them.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners meeting today is September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'd ask that everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So in attendance, we see, oops, I will lose, lost, we have Commissioner Tom Borello, I think appearing via Zoom though he's international, so we hope he stays in. Yeah, the other Board of Commissioners are here. Also in the room, Julie White, Jason Henry, Shanaja Conan, Chuck Nickerson, Robin Burnier, Jude Gates, and Lee Linton. There does not appear to be anyone else in Zoom land. So with that, we'll turn right to openings and the first opening is relative to the institutional products and linens.
I make a motion to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have the opening for desktops and laptops for facilities operations.
Make a motion to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have the award for the atrium recoat and exterior panels.
Is this opening, what, do you know which one that's opening in the box?
Let me introduce. For which one it's for, it's samples for.
When I was leaving.
The what?
When it.
Linens, oh, so it needs to be physically open. You don't want the tool? I even got the tool.
Okay, we're moving right on to the.
Atrium recoat.
Yep.
I make a motion to award the proposal for atrium recoat of exterior panels to Structures Unlimited for an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand six hundred seventy dollars as recommended by the Senior Directory of Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, discussion? There are two bids that seem like the bid that would most meet, work best with our system, our water. All right.
Yes, well, the second bid would have, could have potentially been a problem.
Correct.
So.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have the award for the chiller condenser replacement.
Make a motion to award the proposal for chiller condenser replacement in the fernal building to APMB Enterprises LLC for an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand dollars, eight hundred, as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, discussion? I will just offer that we got two bids and this was the one that met the specs. Do you feel like, dude, I know it's, we only have two and one didn't meet the specs, but that this was like a good, you know, fair bid?
I do, actually. There were a couple of others that came in late, so I think we had.
A frame of reference.
Yeah, and he probably did press right.
Fantastic. Anything else? Commit, okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Next, we have the award for floor restoration and the delegation.
Make a motion to award the proposal for floor restoration, delegation to Madison Flooring LLC for an amount not to exceed three thousand one hundred forty dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, discussion? It's the lowest bid and it's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have.
Looking forward to seeing the restoration in there. That's it's done.
It'll be beautiful, yeah.
We have the award for the laundry equipment preventative maintenance and service contract.
Make a motion to award the proposal for laundry equipment preventative maintenance and service contract to Tri-State Laundry Systems for the period of two years, beginning of October one, two thousand and twenty-five, for one hundred twenty-five dollars per hour for service calls, a hundred seventy dollars per hour for holidays, and an annual amount of eleven thousand four hundred dollars for the Rehabilitation and Nursing Center, and seven thousand eight hundred dollars for the Department of Corrections as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, discussion? I'll just add this, our kind of vendor, and we've been satisfied with the award. So thank you for, thank you. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have an award for the Sheriff Dispatch Computers for Facilities Operations.
Make a motion to award the proposal for Sheriff Dispatch Computers to Connection for an amount not to exceed ten thousand one hundred dollars as recommended by the Senior Directory of Facilities, Planning and IT and the IT Director.
Second, discussion?
I apologize for keep calling you a directory instead of director.
Yeah. I have a question, Robert. I was looking at the, I appreciate how you detail out this spreadsheet. It makes it so helpful and easy to look at. I noticed that a number of vendors, it looks like they bid twice.
They, two different products.
For two different.
So they gave us some options.
Great.
And Connection is a known vendor and it's.
Right.
Commissioner Tom Borello is asking to call in because he's not able to connect with Zoom. Should I have him call on my phone and? And here he is. Good morning, Commissioner.
I think it's, good afternoon.
Oh, it's good afternoon for you.
You're on speaker.
This is on speaker. It's really, really low, Tom. Is there a, can you speak into the microphone better or? Is this the international connection problem?
I'm just trying to play along with the extension.
Okay, can you hear us? Can you hear Kate?
I can hear, I, yeah, I can hear you rather well.
Okay, so we'll just leave this here in the best that he can.
Sure.
All right, we're in the middle of the meeting.
Okay.
Uh, we're doing awards right now.
And there, we have an open motion to award the Sheriff's Dispatch Computers to Connection for an amount not to exceed ten thousand one hundred dollars. So we've had some discussion and now we're calling the motion. So on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Borello?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have the tabletop tire changer and balancer, and that is also an award.
Make a motion to award the proposal for tabletop tire changer and balancer to Lift Now Automotive Equipment Corporation for an amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand six hundred forty-four dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, discussion? I just say it's the lowest bid and meets the specs and within the. On the motion, anybody else? Commissioner Tom Borello?
Yes.
Okay, I think that was a, we'll enter that if yes. Commissioner Godu?
No, you're supposed to say C. He's in Italy. Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move right on to the consent agenda and firstly, you have a motion with respect to the meeting minutes for August fourteenth and twenty-eight.
Okay, so before I actually make this motion, I would like to avoid the August twenty-eighth non-public minutes because they were just delivered too late for me to read.
Okay.
So I'm gonna, I'll read the motion without those.
Sure.
That date. Okay, so I make a motion to approve August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, non-public meeting minutes.
Second.
Second.
Second, we've got, Commissioner Tom Borello seconded. Any discussion?
Well done.
Hearing none, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Borello?
Yes.
And I. I vote yes. We have an adult medical daycare report next on our agenda and does anybody? We came in that, for the first month, we've expended fifty-seven hundred dollars. We could be, in terms of apportioning it for the year, that we can be closer to eight thousand dollars per year, so there's still room to bring on additional clients for care.
There are plenty of room.
But it's nice getting a monthly report so we can know where we are and we welcome applications.
And we welcome another facility if somebody else came up with an adult daycare that they are looking for support. We're available to help.
Okay, we'll move, next move to surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty-eight eight A for long-term care services.
Make a motion to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty-eight colon A dot eight dash A and declare thirty-four air mattresses from long-term care services surplus with the items to be properly disposed of.
Second.
Okay, second was by Commissioner Tom Borello. Any discussion? I just say that they're older.
We're cleaning up the list, so some of the items aren't in the building, some of, so there's a long spreadsheet and we've just been shipping away it, trying to make it accurate for what's in the center and what's, um, the length and.
Great. Well, thank you for inventorying it and creating that list, so we're having accurate numbers, but also thank you for, to the extent that we get rid of things that we're not using or not, you know, so we're not storing it in rooms or have other issues with it, so. On the motion, Commissioner Tom Borello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have the AP approval for September eighteen.
I make a motion to approve the September eighteen, two thousand and twenty-five accounts payable list total of one million nine hundred eighty-nine thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents.
I think it's sixty-three cents.
Sixty-three cents, yes, it is.
Second. Okay, discussion? Very, well, I mean, we can just talk about some of it. We had a prime care bill, we have contracted nursing and some of our therapy services.
Oh, typical.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Borello?
Yeah.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
We're moving on to the Commissioners' updates. Anybody have anything? What's happening on the other side of the, the drink, Commissioner Tom Borello?
Beautiful, beautiful, and you know, we went yesterday to the Mount E. Coast and you guys, if you ever get a chance to do that in your lifetime, you gotta go there. The most incredible tour you could ever go on. But Italy is beautiful and today we leave this afternoon at seven o'clock our time, because it's like five something now here, we're six hours ahead of you, and I'll be in Spain tomorrow.
Lovely. Well, have a wonderful vacation. Thank you for tuning in. Commissioner Godu?
I don't have anything special to report this week.
No, you're right. So, we'll move right on to Chaplain Services Contract.
I have a motion to approve the Chaplain Services Contract for a period of one year beginning October first, two thousand and twenty-five, with the option of a two-year extension for an annual amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars and authorize the Chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Superintendent.
Second.
Second.
Superintendent, did you have an opportunity? I had made a couple of suggestions on changes, particularly with respect to, and I'll just talk to you about that. The material breach.
Yep, was, uh, we fixed that, sent it over back and also had a previous Commissioner that was on it, it's more longer on board.
I, but just for your purposes, if you had it, it says, it says, "Material breach shall include," and I said, I wanted to add the language, but not be limited to because the interpretation is that those would only be the conditions of material breach, whereas.
Makes, makes perfect sense.
Yes, we added that this morning.
Great. Does anybody else have any discussion on?
I don't.
On the, on the motion, Commissioner Tom Borello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Next, we are moving right to the Finance Office and we have a Harvey Construction warrant.
Make a motion to approve the September eighteen, two thousand and twenty-five accounts payable warrant T two-six-zero-two-seven-six payable to Harvey Construction Corporation in the amount of one million three hundred twenty-eight thousand nine hundred thirty dollars and fourteen cents as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT and the Senior Director of Finance.
Director.
Discussion?
Everything looked in order to me and I learned that we're buying washing machines for Department of Correction. I was unaware of that program, so it's nice to see all the detail.
Yeah, it's great. And the other thing is, I mean, our warrants are winding down. It's kind of pretty wild.
Yeah, how, I, Chuck, how are we doing with the budget? I assume that we're doing well or else we'd hear.
There's two separate things. This leads into my, the next item, so.
Yes.
The GNP, yes. The GNP, yes. There's money's left over in escalation contingency allowances. Yes, we went over winter, but net wise, I think we're the positive around sixty thousand or so, maybe forty then. But, so there, we're net positive. It's on the change order side. That's outside the GNP.
Right.
That's where it's higher. So I think if you're to net both, now part of the change orders are covered by the one million dollar project.
Yeah.
So that's okay. It's the other one point four. There's some other change orders probably going to be coming, so one point five. So net wise, we were slightly, I think, of negative, but again, this feeds into the next item request.
Okay, I'll wait for the detail then.
Well, it's just that we can use some of the opioid abatement, as I understand opioid abatement fund money to cover those costs that are tied to.
That's related to.
Change orders.
Yes, because, well, I'll wait till the next item for, to discuss a little bit more about the opioid abatement money and that project, because it was tied with the ARPA project too, so.
Yes. Okay, does any further discussion on the warrant?
No.
Um, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Borello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have the operating transfer to the capital fund relative to the opioid abatement fund.
Make a motion to approve an operating transfer from the opioid abatement fund to the capital fund for fifty percent of the access cost over the approved ARPA projects as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second.
Discussion?
Okay, so Chuck, why don't you?
So we're gonna go in our wayback machine, back to August twenty-twenty-one, when we had the, when we had the ARPA committee, when the county had its ARPA committee, that even had a state rep that was on there as well, and a county commissioner, myself and Allison. So back then, the estimate for a proposed project for the Community Corrections Building for methanol substance abuse, abuse services, it was eight million dollars. Because of how things change and different project scheme monies or whatnot, in the end, the final amount for the Community Corrections was for an ARPA project was only four point four-five-three million, I believe. So oddly enough, we are now through, we have a draft of Harvey invoice number twenty-nine and the total looks like it's gonna get close to eight million dollars. And so one of the items that is easily permissible under fourteen different categories for opioid abatement settlements is, is for construction, providing services for methanol substance use abuse services. And so that's why the request to have some of that overage from the ARPA project amount supported by through opioid abatement funds, and I think this partially also feeds into what Commissioner Corle said out at his last meeting and the meeting before about wanting maybe utilize some of the opioid abatement fund monies towards like longer term, like capital nature projects and not necessarily your, your funding for operational costs.
I said, I'm very supportive of that.
Okay, and I did some on some other separate information as far as where it looks like we're trending. And I think on the transfer, overall transfer sheet, I gave like a rundown of the amounts by Harvey invoice and where the ARPA money stopped. And then even with utilizing this much for, for the operating, well, the transfer out to capital fund, we would still currently have, you know, two point five million currently in the opioid abatement fund for utilization. And over the next ten years or so, another estimated four point nine million in opioid abatement settlements should be coming to the county. That's a wow. So.
So this motion says fifty percent. Can you put a dollar amount to that?
Uh, one, just try one point seven million.
Five.
Is fifty percent?
Of the access, because again, it looks like we're gonna get right by the eight million dollars original estimate for the Community Corrections Building in, again, four point four-five-three million was covered by the ARPA project. And so that access, you know, of the, you know, three and a half roughly will be fifty percent is being requested to be covered through this transfer.
So we're transferring one point seven million for that purpose? And with change orders, we are one point five billion?
We'll see where we are at the end, but.
But we're trending that way.
Yeah.
And so does this make that come closer to zero?
Closer. One other thing that's going on too, are things are even outside of Harvey period like Nobis, some additional items for Warren Street. So again, we've had, this has happened with construction projects, things happen.
Waterline issues, previously.
Yeah, they've been all legitimate change orders.
We still don't know yet.
Yeah.
In fact, we, we have some infrastructure taken care of.
Well, I mean, I think.
I don't know where we're gonna end up with the antenna system for the fire department. We won't have that probably until the end of next week, so we're not done, done, but getting really close.
Right, so what I'm also looking forward to is that we already know that we're, we will be on the plus side for categorical assistance because we have our county cap. So if we do need some additional monies, we have that, that we can request from the board and from the executive committee to come through, you know, that third or fourth Friday in October.
That's five hundred thousand-ish.
Yeah.
But, but, I mean, I think it's stepping back. We were authorized for a bond for thirty million and we only took a bond for twenty-five. And, you know, Chuck, I mean, to your genius, Chuck, I was like, a lot skeptical about this, but you know what happens? There's always, there's always overages, like there's always unexpected, the unexpected, which, you know. So I think it's actually pretty remarkable that we're finding rent money in other places to access the money to deal with these changes, but not passing it, we're not passing it along in perpetuity for the lifetime of the bond, right? I mean, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think my guess way back when, which I go to, when you're asking about funding sources, and I thought anywhere between like three, three and a half million, it might have to come from general fund, one way or another. So obviously, two million came through as far as the dedicated part of the capital products transfer, the annual budgeting.
Right.
And so obviously, we now, obviously, we're having to worry about, you know, other overages and other areas, so we're actually getting kind of closer back, you know, in a way to other funds that were needed, whether it was gonna be from general fund or capital fund reserves or what have you.
And just to be clear for everybody that's paying attention to what we're talking about here, the overages are all from change orders, legitimate change orders that, that have occurred along the way unforeseen. It's got nothing to do with the GNP.
No, the, the GNP, we're totally fine. So we're talking about, we're on budget for the project, yes, within the original scope, yes, we're under budget, we're under budget there.
Well, yeah, I mean, and we, you were starting to go down this road, Commissioner, not doing all episodes of it again. I mean, tangentially, we have done a number of major infrastructure projects for the county as a whole, as part and parcel of doing this project, so. You know, and that's, those are really tied to a lot of the change orders, even though it's sort of attached to the building itself. It's really.
Was a benefit for the whole family, absolutely. Okay, great. Did you get all that, Tom?
I got it all.
You need to translate into Italian for you?
Any project you do, you're gonna run into some bugs and some hills that you're gonna, the Commissioner Corle does construction. I don't know if she's ever had, will be perfect on budget, but they're hard, they're hard. Something this big, you're gonna find little things that we need to do. So I'm fine with it.
Tom, I just finished one, right on budget.
You know, I honestly, when I do a contract, a little place, I'll say, we got, you're on budget, you're in close, so if we could be, we're in good shape.
Well, thanks. On the motion, Commissioner Tom Borello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have the Amwin's renewal letters for Human Resources.
I make a motion to approve the two Ambwin's renewal letters and authorize the Chair to sign necessary documents.
Second.
Discussion?
It was, it was just a renewal, right?
Right. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Borello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have an exception request nine dash five for bereavement leave and deeds.
I move to approve an exception request to personnel policy nine dash five for agreement leave for a registry of these employee, JG.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, Commissioner Tom Borello?
I, I, I just did no, like, no discussion.
No, I know.
On a different, yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's a three O vote. All right, I think we are moving right into, we're cruising through the agenda, Department head updates. Julie, I'm sorry, you sit to my right first, so I think I called you first last week and here you are again.
I did it to Allison every week because she was sitting there.
Hello, I just have a little quick thing. So just a reminder, our Years of Service event is coming up. We have an R S V P deadline by nine twenty-sixth. We don't have a lot of responses, so this is just reminding people to get your R S speakers in. I don't know if Irene is going to hound people or not, but I'm just taking it upon myself to remind people. Also, we have our job fair happening next week, so we just asked Autumn what the response has been for people scheduling interviews. We have a hundred and eight interviews scheduled for the job fair, which is pretty cool. All different departments, and so each department will be provided a list of their current openings with the interviews and resumes prior to the job fair. HR is gonna be there to help with getting people to apply, answering questions, all that stuff. So I'm sure everyone has been talking to Autumn, but we just want to let everyone know the response has been really great to that, so looking forward to that. That's it for me.
Thank you. Jason?
Thank you, Dan. Catburn's contract, we should get. We're at one sixty-seven, new house. Legislative meetings have started again. Last week was our first one. They have some bills out there, just the title so far, but they'll be coming fast and furious. Our compliance manager, which was Jimmy Warden, who was a comeback, he ate beef with us, has already started on several things, including belt tension facilities, A D A L D F. It's on, used to be on volume four, it's on volume five now. So he's going through all of our policies to make sure we're updated to the newest standards, almost small language changes, we're doing that right now. He has started to work on auditing all the policies. We're starting with a use of force policies. I'm saying first one, I'm O C, we'll work together to make an outline how we're gonna book the compliance on and then actual form back and forth and sign up and timeframes, all those kinds of things, so very much looking forward to continue working on that with him. And that's all we have right now.
Thank you. Shane, go.
Hello, so for census, the nursing home, we're at a hundred and thirty-six. At the assisted living, we are at forty-six. We are unfortunately still in outbreak, but we have been able to contain it to that one unit. Staff are doing a really great job around that, but we have three staff, we still have them in nine residents. Some general items, we are in the process of planning for our clinical skills fair coming in October, so more information to come on that. We're doing it a little differently this year, so we're excited to see that. We had two winners, one from the assisted living and one from the nursing home last night that won scholarships through the New Hampshire Healthcare Association for continued education and growth in the long-term care field, so very excited. So very excited for them. We also had Eric Collette come, I've been kind of talking about that along, we had a lot of staff attend. Uh, there were three sessions on dementia, one on leadership and one on mental health and kind of some of the science behind it, that was. Very interesting. Uh, the presenter was actually very kind and let us record it, so we were able to actually upload it for the staff that didn't come. But it was really exciting to kind of see everyone talking about it, and after the first session that was at seven. They started telling others, so people were getting coverage so that they could come down and some people that were off. In and it was like, we heard it was really good, and so. Uh, it was, it was really nice to kind of see some of that, and it was, it was really well done, so we were happy for that. Um, the pie contest, we finally finished all of the tracking and the forms and the kind of legwork to it. And by me, it was carried. Um, so we have thirty one people, I believe, that are on the list to, to raise money, so that'll be going out, if not this week. Um. Normally Monday, we'll collect money at the switchboard and as well as a location in corrections. Um. Yeah, I just have proud of. Um, for that, so.
And what is that fundraiser for?
The Alzheimer's.
Right.
So October, there's the Alzheimer's walk. So we have that um, piece and it was really great because as I was kind of talking and everyone jumped in and said yes. Where it turned from typically just a nursing home initiative to raise money to a countywide initiative, and I think it just continues to speak to the. Collaboration between departments. I'm also really pulling producers to get pie, so. I'm here for it.
Probably some others.
In addition to that, uh, it is environmental services week, so we have a wonderful EBS team in the building. We're very fortunate and anyone that comes in the building always comments on how clean it is, so if you see them, please. Acknowledge them and always, but for EBS week. And we have another large orientation coming this week, I think we're at fourteen people.
Wow.
There's some for, if we've, you have two, Jude, um, and then we have some. Alan A's, we have a nurse, we have one of our three to eleven supervisors, which is replacing on the agency contract. That you've been utilizing, so very excited about that. And we also have another clinical, Allen A clinical site that reached out to us about hosting clinicals, so we have started initial meetings with that. And I am in conversations with um, the, I stand on a board of a local LBN school down kind of closer to where I live. Um, and there, we're working the negotiations to hopefully be able to, they're looking for a teacher to also be able to hopefully host um. Clinicals here for nursing, so we're working on some of those, which will also help. Uh, from a hiring standpoint. So a lot of, of busy.
Lead generation.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Chuck.
Um, the other day, we received a dress set for the twenty five minute K cost part, um, so. Looking over, I do see one will edit for fixed assets, this additional depreciation to be added, so. After that goes through, I think the level finalized set more in advance of the uh, September thirtieth deadline, since there is, so no. Scrambling ground building at the state uh, there, so. Uh, I've been conquered, so it will be set, um. Let's see, this is the as usual, you know, audits. What have you, getting near another quarter end, so all the grant filings will start happening as well. Um, I'm happy to report that'll also mean the pose out for rental systems too, because nine thirty was the last quarter for that program, so. Um, we'll be just uh, dotting the eyes, proscenities and hopefully no other reporting parameters changed. We're doing the pose out, but let's see, um. We do have our uh, county analyst as well as working individuals for next Monday's orientation, so that's great news. And uh, thanks HR for all those involved and putting together, um, completely one care as far as the uh. The job fair, because we already have people lined up as well, I guess, for Daryl practitioner and for Grant Rider.
Yeah, two the other day.
Oh, good.
Brandon's writer.
Yes, I've got some resumes.
Really? They know you're a good, good boss. This is great, this is just like, what a group.
It still has one more run, so we put it in the union leader last Sunday, and then it'll be in again this Sunday. And then social media and Carrie Donovan Airplane Defense has posted it around. Um, and our staff, we've kind of tried to get them to post it at the places they go and.
How soon, how late into the game can people um, sign up for interviews?
I.
I just think it's do it on the flies.
It's like a QR, Autumn very creatively put a QR code on the flyer, so you can do it in the. Kind of moment, that's what we posted around in addition to the social medias. Um, but I mean, when I asked her yesterday morning, it was at ninety one, so today it's still going and we still have one more. Um, running the unit heater while as well.
This is just.
Higher, higher, higher.
Yeah.
On another HACC, now addition to legislative committee meeting starting up. Um, I'm gonna start working on next year's budget, because HACC is calendar year, so. I've got to have that all prepared and run through the HACC finance committee. Before it goes for the vote by the commissioners council and or this overall. Dues are in the commissioners council wheelhouse and then executive committee for the overall budget, so that's has to be all set up for that second week. In November for the conference, with at the conference, we'll hold on that.
We get a news holiday. No, no. Well, again, the fiftieth anniversary dues piece will be gone, that's the one time. So, so counties will see the dues go down regardless of the schedule, so.
Thank you, Chuck, anything else?
All right, profit.
Morning, uh, lots of things going on in my world, obviously, the new building is taking a large portion of our time. In addition to that, we've been reviewing all the. Hundreds of applications at this point that have come in and then we're getting popped for the job fair, so. We have a lot of candidates, a lot to look through, um, so I'm optimistic, we're gonna find people that are gonna make good foot to our. To our group, so.
Well, central square, you talk about the training.
Sure, for central square, the um, D O C is getting ready to uh, start their training. Probably in about four weeks, we're gonna start to work on that. For the pro suite, which will replace our current JMS at the jail. Um, could same system that the sheriff's department is rolling out, getting ready to go live next week. So we're looking forward to that as well.
This is a big.
Yeah, it's a big one.
Yeah.
Big one.
There's a lot of pro suite training happening around the uh, about around Rockham County right now, but.
Yeah, they've got a nice post um, on social media yesterday, you know, about, about the sheriff's department. And their training and a lot of the PDs that have posted their training sites, that's, that was really nice.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks.
Jude.
Good morning. Also, I'm in some of the applications, I mean, obviously, the new building is still taking up a lot of. A lot of our energy, but I really have nothing to report, all as well, they're putting up the artwork in the building, we're that close.
Wow.
Um, yeah, I think WB Mason is just about done. And then we just obviously have quite a few finishing touches to go through, but the artworks going back, it's really coming together beautifully. The interior designer from Warren Street, who put it together, Bruce, just is absolutely gifted, I can't. Just coming together so beautifully, I think it's really gonna be a, a huge point of pride for the county for using this.
I have a picture hanging in my office. If it makes sense, if they're doing all that kind of stuff at once, I'd be happy that they transfer that to a.
Okay, I don't know if they have a picture in your office or not, but if you love it.
It's hanging, well.
If you'd like it in your office, I'd be happy to ask, I'm to take care of that for us.
I would.
Sure thing.
Please, thank you.
You bet.
We're down to that level detail, right?
That's like one oh one, the bottom level, that's great.
Um, Kathy, I see you're here. Welcome, we're on moving, we are in department head updates and do not to put you on the spot right now, because just, but do you have anything to share?
She's muted alone.
You're muted.
Did you set that?
You can't, yeah, she's.
You have to unmute, is that it, Leila, the new settings?
We'll just click on her box.
Super, thank you. Um, everything's uh, pretty good over here, been a little bit busy, we've had some good money this week, guys, some. Big transfer tax stamp, so pretty happy about that, especially where it'll sit in our coffers for the rest of the month until we. You know, sign over a check to the state, so it's all looking good, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Leila?
I have more thing, thank you.
Um, we. Move, next, we'll move on to new business, old business, is there any other?
I have no new business today.
We do have a walk-in regarding a contract buyout, woo-hoo, it's always exciting.
Shall I read that motion?
Proceed.
I make a move, I move to approve the Fusion Medical Staffing LLC contract buyout or LA. A full-time second shift nursing supervisor to be hired as nursing manager and authorize the senior director. Of human resources to sign the Fusion Medical Staffing LLC invoice.
Um, any discussion? Just happy when we can see buyout.
We, we got a buyout of a staff contract and an agency contract, and now. This will be full time, and these are people we know, because they've been working here for a while, it's, it's, so win-win all the way around.
Supervisor.
So we've been running with our driving them three to eleven as the agency because of retirements. And um, one is starting that we hired in. In orientation next week, but this individual has been doing it and she's done a beautiful job and there's remarkable change already in the culture. The other day, she had like a potluck, like a cookout with the staff and engaging them, so it's. It's been very nice and even for the staff.
So great.
Excellent.
Uh, the motion commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Barello. And I vote yes. All right, uh, we move right to a public comment now, and I see someone on, on Zoom, Janai Lewis. Would you care to speak?
Sure, I'll speak.
Go ahead.
All right, thanks for letting me speak, I'm here because of the. Article that came out about Rockingham County wanting to open a hundred to a hundred and fifty beds up for ICE detention. And wanted to come speak out against that. Um, if this is the time. So I guess my biggest question is, why do you all think that we need more detention's? Capacity in New Hampshire? Um, from my perspective and my experience, these detention centers are filling up because ICE is playing games with people's lives. Um, I know this because my friend Kata has been in detention for six weeks. She was at an airport traveling for work when officers demanded to see her papers. And she showed them her DACA work authorization card and they took her anyways. And she has repeatedly proven her right to be here. A judge has dismissed her deportation case uh, recently, as of last week, and she is still in detention. And I know that this is not just a solitary case, we know that people are being detained. When they are going to their regularly scheduled um, court immigration hearings and then being taken, they're being seized at work. And they're being held, um. We know through what has been happening at P's that people are being transferred illegally, moved around the country. As a way to mess with their immigration hearings, right? They have a certain amount of time to contest what is happening, and then they are moved without their lawyers and families knowing. And that is slowing down their ability to fight back, to push back, and then they are deported from this country uh, without due process. And so my fear is that if we, in New Hampshire and Rockingham County. Increase our capacity, we are just enabling ICE to continue playing games with people's lives. Because then what happens after six weeks or however long, they do prove that they're able to be here. What has happened to their job, their ability to pay rent, what happens to their children, their families, their pets, their animals, that they weren't able to take care of during that time? Um, all of it just strikes me as extremely inhumane. And I don't believe that whatever six million dollar figure that I've heard thrown around is, is worth that. To disrupt people's lives, um, and I just want everyone here to think about that and. Shut this down ideally, so thank you, um, again, my name is Janai Lewis, I'm a resident of Portsmouth, if that wasn't, if that's needed for the record.
Thank you so much, and thank you for uh, for your public comment. Um. Thanks for sticking on the line to speak. Now. Public comment being, I don't see anyone else doing it close, uh, we're gonna move into non-public sessions and where's non-public sessions to go? No one?
We have a non-public today?
Might you, but.
Oh, yes, we have one uh, with respect to IT, so.
Okay.
Um, with that, I'll take a motion to enter into non-public session.
Uh, I move to enter non-public session for New Hampshire RSA ninety one A colon three. Roman numeral two A uh, for. It says personnel, but we're not discussing personnel.
Now, it's relative.
Is this relative to security?
Yeah.
Relative to security. Is that a second, Mr.?
Okay. On the motion, Commissioner Tom Barello. Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. You're now heading into non-public, thank you, everybody. We've come out of non-public, we have one non-public session and um, we have a one motion to make relative to that non-public session.
I mean, move to seal the non-public minutes indefinitely because it's determined that divulgence. Of this information would likely render a proposal action ineffective.
I don't think it would fall into that one.
Oh, really?
It would pertain to carrying out acts of regarding terrorism.
Okay, I will, uh, I'll amend my motion to say that it pertains. Preparation or carrying out of actions regarding terrorism.
Thank you for that. It actually could fall under either, but. How often you get you?
Yeah, that's right, we don't get to use that one very often.
On the motion commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote, I, or actually, I seconded, and then, yes, and I'm a yes. And one more motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, seconds, all those in favor, hi. Have a nice afternoon, everybody, thank you.
Good afternoon.